All right, we're moving into Board of Education Communication Discussion. Who's the meeting at this time? Tuesday meeting. Tomorrow, six o'clock here in the meeting. Tuesday, April 47, special meeting, six o'clock here at Keeler. For second round interviews. Regular board meeting, Monday, May 10, at 6:30 p.m. Monday, May 10, Buildings and Facilities Committee meeting at 5:30 p.m. Here at Keeler School. And Monday, May 17, Board of Education. We were going to do this totally online, this Zoom meeting on Monday, May 17, to elect or electors for the, uh, way Lisa. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Move by Mr. Prybor, second by Mr. Osaski, it's area discussion. There are none, we're going to move into a roll call, but we'll start with Ms. Gray. Ms. Gray votes yes to adjourn. Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Osaski?
Yes.
Ms. Prybor?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Foye?
Yes.
Here it is, yes. Motion carries, we are adjourned at 7:57. See y'all tomorrow. Did you hear me saying that before I tested? All right, my call this meeting back to order at 8:35. Do we have any comments?
I'm sorry?
We have a feedback form from the rest.
Yes, I'm just about to close it right now.
Okay.
And then I'll have to put that into an Excel spreadsheet and then I will email it to all of you. So what we would typically do is you're all taking that committee feedback, look over your notes from the past two nights. Gave you guys plenty of space to do that, make their notes. And then what we'd like to do is talk about each candidate, so go through the board, discuss each candidate. And then we will poll the board after that. And we'll see which two candidates you would like to move forward to the second round and have another conversation with. The one thing I'll say about the discussion of candidates, if you agree with something that's already been said, we don't need to repeat it. You could simply say, you know, I agree with what somebody else said already about this, like at this point. But we don't need to keep rehashing the same things over and over. The goal would be to get down to two tonight. And we'll see where we're at when we poll. But first we'll go, we'll talk about each candidate when we're ready. And what you thought we interviewed, and then we'll go from there. Does that sound like a good plan?
When you give us feedback, we'll be like combined into live time, such a feedback so that we have a party meeting, a little call, email.
Would you like it all, or do you want just nine?
I personally would like it all, but whatever the goal of the board is.
Okay, it's not a problem. I can download it, it's all better for me to do, I just need to know. I'll separate my candidate and I'll email it to all of you, it'll just take a minute to do it. So I would suggest reviewing those notes that you have on your interviews and starting to think about those things.
So it's quiet time?
This is work time, yeah.
Oh, I know.
So you're hitting yours now? As soon as I hit this spreadsheet, export it and format it for you, yes.
Miss Pritchard.
This one.
I don't know.
I don't remember my password to get into the, is there a chance to be cleared out?
Did you change it?
No, what I did is I had the computer remember. So when I go into it at home, I just hit enter.
No, I don't know. Because they made it. I mean, mine really worked, it was really good, yes, for gift cards.
Yeah, good thinking.
Why not? No, because I made like forty-seven characters and... Since, you know, yeah, you need to know the way I'm so much for some money. Sure, okay.
I was muted when I said it was quiet time?
Yeah.
So we're waiting on the feedback boards so we can discuss the candidates and what they've got. So we're reviewing our notes that we made during the train areas in preparation for that. This page has been loved intentionally. Know what they say when you're going through a presentation, you think there's nothing there. You're not missing anything, we're not wrong.
I have a plug in the back.
My, what? The email, what's that? I don't see a email like coming out of them.
Yes, I agree. Hey, she had it written down.
Yes.
Oh, good.
Not that she is.
Do we have a, um, table?
Wait one second. Do we have email, mail? I'm sorry? You're on my.
All right, here. Go ahead. And then I phrase it, text, please, sir. Now everybody with the feedback boards from the... All right, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna try to do it right. Jennifer, hold on to the list.
Any call?
I guess, okay. I'll follow. I need to go to the district, and I need to go to our...
So, one column is supposed to be Mr. Dr. Robinson, the other is supposed to be...
If you scroll over, you can see. It came up here.
Yeah, so if you just click that arrow there. So each line here is one individual, all right? Right, and it's got their name right there. Very good, thank you.
So is that right for you that is called?
No, yeah.
There you go. Is that it?
I don't need to read them. I've said anything we get written down, so they always seem to notice.
Just give up if you think it's a very good idea.
All right, Ken, when you have a moment, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you. So we'll follow the same process we did in the last round of interviews. We'll talk about each candidate. Again, there's no need to repeat something that's already been said. If you're in agreement, that's enough for you to say. Also, any of you that have reference checks you would like to mention and share with the rest of the board, any reference checks that you have, calls that you think would be interesting for the rest of the board to hear, please share those as well. So let's start with your first candidate of the night. We'll start with Dr. Jennifer Robinson. And Sherry, please start with you, please.
Okay, so you want me to make my argument? Or am I giving the motion? No?
No, just like last time, how we discussed each candidate's interview from tonight, is that any, anything you learned from the reference checks that you did?
Okay, well, I didn't do reference checks, but I still think you qualified. You know what you're looking for?
If that's what you have to contribute to the discussion.
She talking about Witt or Robinson?
Dr. Jennifer Robinson is who we're talking about. Okay, Rebecca, please.
And we're muting, so right, we're talking to the... So I was very impressed with Dr. Robinson. I deeply believe that the people closest to the problem are the people closest to the solution. And I think that that is exemplified by the many, the many women references and the understanding of what it is that people who are, who are trained, and these folks that have experience in the classroom. I think, I was in what we call soft skills and positive skills. And that essentially, Dr. Robinson has doing incredibly good people skills and relationship building skills. And that is evidenced by the connections that he has formed throughout his career. His emphasis on evaluation and data during assessments, the solution oriented, that not just to understand diversity, inclusion, and actually the ability to embody some inclusion in his approach to working with folks, a deep understanding of what it looks like to have a positive culture and how to build it. Obviously, he works experience around achievement. He's a working teacher and he's multi-dimensional in terms of experience in the classroom, experience with appearance, direct experience with students, experience with administrators, experience with education and the system. I'll stop, I'll stop there now.
Thank you. Jim, please.
So on the checks that I did for Mr. Robinson, the fact that he's in Detroit Public School District and the fact that he's been there thirty years, there's a limitation. If you go to job, 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 you have a rich resource of different people coming at it. But one of the problems is the Detroit Public School District system is trying to make contact with people. Like I contacted the unions, I didn't get any response. I did contact his reference. She's the principal of Castack High School. And she has an enrollment of like twenty-five hundred students, which is large as this system here. And she speaks highly of them because his school feeds into her. And they also are collaborative in terms of working together. They talk about having a vision, he puts it into action, the amount of time he invests into things. He comes early and leaves late. Looking for something more, I contacted an employee at the academy that he works at. This individual was a student, was a student of his and also is now an employee. She spoke glowingly of him, organized, professional, serious, and listens to people. She says he takes things seriously and will get things done. On that, the, looking at the resume, things of that nature, I think in terms of providing skills and abilities, plus listening to the key words that he used during the interview, sounds exceptionally qualified.
Thank you. Jennifer, please.
So my reference check for Dr. Robinson was Dr. Rima Reynolds at Eastern Michigan University. We spoke on the phone today. The only thing that really stood out was when I asked about his career progression. She did say that he has worked in various capacities in central office, that he has always been a leader that, as long as she has known him. Obviously, she had a glowing review of him. My own interpretation, oh gosh, I don't even want to do that. My own interpretation, Dr. Robinson's experience and education are, in my opinion, invaluable to this district. I'm excited to see what he could do here. When I look through our own vision for superintendent that we put out, he checks off all of the professional and personal categories we have listed.
Thank you. Lusa, please.
All right, so Dr. Robinson, from the beginning, from the first time I read his resume when they were presented, and I gave you the blank, so I didn't know who it was, he was one of, he was my top, one of my top two. So, he had a great opener in his letter, he's highly regarded, he's enthusiastic, and he cares greatly. I think that was shown throughout his interviews. A couple things, this evening, when he did his presentation, he listed that his PhD was in education. And on his resume, he lists that his PhD is in interdisciplinary studies with a focus on educational leadership. Makes me wonder which of those is what his degree is really in. Because I don't think the color of the cow is the same way. Education is definitely different than educational leadership and interdisciplinary study. I am concerned about his lack of district level contract management, bond work, bargaining, human resources, and finance. And from his... And from his reference, he was just glowing and enjoying everything about him. And I felt like talking to her, because her enthusiasm was effective. She suggested that if we hired him as superintendent, we should, we should consider providing him a coach.
And that is not an uncommon thing for any superintendent making out of season in the district?
No, no, I think that did make me have some thoughts that are in the area.
Jeff, please.
Most of the, I thought Dr. Robinson had a great interview. My only concerns are, clearly the same on the piece, is that central office, budgeting, contract negotiations, those are my concerns. Because all of our contracts are up, they're all quickly coming due. And I had Dr. Nicolai, he from Detroit, and I couldn't get in touch with him for anything.
Thank you, sir. Evelyn, please.
So I want to ask this, or I often ask this, with the person I was assigned for our candidate interview, who I'm sure have also been one of our candidates, so probably doesn't surprise me why you didn't return back off. But, so, I mean, I'll say, because, okay, I'll say this again. You can tell that he loves children and that he's passionate about that. I respect the fact that he fought an emergency manager and saved a building. I respect the fact that he told us, you know, he prepared the name when he failed us. My concerns are that, again, that lack of negotiations, well, what Mr. Robinson said, but also, he has a lot about raising our human resources. And his school is ranked in the bottom 50% of the state. So his human sources, and the schools that he runs, one school that he runs, are no better than ours. So how can you do something in an entire district that you haven't even been able to do in your own school? So that's what me is a concern. His ranking is 2,005 out of 3,100 schools. Which is 2,014 from the bottom. Yeah, yeah. Our people aren't super great, not saying that, but that's a concern for me. Some of his answers were well-rounded answers, and some of his answers were so well-rounded. It kind of left me, for example, we asked him, you know, how would people about the welding and strong relationships all over, and I didn't feel like he really gave an answer to that. I don't feel like he really gave an answer to. Uh, hold on, I'm sorry, I apologize. Maybe I have some of that better, since I didn't remember that. Oh, I'm not, I'm not sure he gave a great answer to accountability, what accountability is. So, those are my concerns.
Thank you. Your other finalist was Jason Witt. And Rebecca, could we start with you, please?
So I think with Jason, with Jason, this is weird to me that from him being already an interim and now the regular superintendent position, I appreciate the ways in which he is already keyed into what is going on in the district. And I think that, of course, makes sense with him already being in this role, and I think that that's reflected in the level of detail that he is able to provide in his, his presentation about the first 100 days. And, which I thought was, was very good. And I very much appreciate everything that he has done, you know, over the last year in such a difficult situation. For me, my only concerns about Mr. Witt as superintendent, obviously, I appreciate this, I think, probably complimentary, so such, or one, that he has lots of central office experience.
Right.
And I think that, at times, I have concerns about using the right language in answers. And we still have, you know, data and experiences coming from the district about what, what that actually looks like. So for example, the question about. And I apologize, I, this is really hard for me to read this later. I obviously lost all of my speaking capacity, so I'll try to do it short. There was, if there was a question about decision-making and including folks in decision-making, and if there was a decision in hindsight, that might have gone differently. And I, you know, certainly, that was an opportunity where Mr. Witt, that he's a member, he would do this and he would do this, and it was an opportunity for him to show us that, whatever the number of teachers, writers you see about, how 1% of the teachers, the no confidence sort of actually applies to, but we, we kind of have the majority of teachers who are, are not happy with them, and I felt that that was a real chance to maybe see a little bit more of how to communicate, as opposed to just the right words or the right language for the words to, to, what actually needs to happen in this district to put all the pieces together. Again, I think there's a, there's typically an emphasis on hard skills or technical skills. And I think that Mr. Witt actually has a lot of those skills. I think that oftentimes, the soft skills, the legal skills, the relationship skills are actually much harder to teach. They have much more long-term consequences. So that's it, those are my comments.
Thank you. Jim, please.
So one of the things with the reference checks, people kept referring, even people that were flattering of him, said that he is smart, he cares about kids, gets involved, but the traction, even by a supporter, the reference that he gave, he has, he had, according to her, a very good idea, and he mentioned it in terms of the mentoring program, which you think would be standard operating procedure within a district. But she referred to that, how great it was. But he said, she said that his style is intimidating. And then, the same sort of thing when I checked further at the Troy School District, there is a vice president of the union who dealt with him while he was there. His management style is to win no matter what the cost, which creates the resentment he was in to win and had to win. And then Allen Park School District, they described his management style as dictatorial. He followed a scorched earth pattern. And I went to the University of Texas also and tried to make contact. The initial contact that I received indicated, but they didn't say specifically that it wasn't, that there was a problem with him leaving. And he was only there for four months, five months, or something like that. But there was nothing direct other than that. They referred me to somebody else, and we never made contact. Mr. Witt does have abilities. If you're thinking about money, we're in the hiring position right now. We've already got Mr. Witt in labor negotiations. I don't know a superintendent that necessarily is actually in the negotiation. You've already hired somebody from Human Resources to do that. I saw on a previous contract that it was Dr. Shivers who signed the agreement. But I'm pretty sure she had Mr. Ward do the actual negotiating in the situation. He's, Mr. Witt has 13 years of central office experience, so he says. And while he's been in this position of interim superintendent, superintendent, he's moved initiatives forward. He presented a 100-day plan to us that talked about the school board, and how we can get committees going, and how we can have better communication, how we can do all these things. But he's been in the position for 300 days. It puts him at a disadvantage because these other people that don't have the position, they can talk about what they want to do. Mr. Witt has had the position where he could do things, and he, I don't see that. But the thing is, if you've got both these people and Mr. Witt is the Human Resources, and you've got the superintendent as Dr. Robinson, then you've got two smart people within our district, and you're not creating a vacancy in the central office again by having Mr. Witt move from Human Resources back to superintendent, where you have to fill that Human Resources position again.
So any, any other thoughts, Mr. Bailey, on the interview or Mr. Witt specifically? Because you're getting, you're getting down the road a little bit. So Ken talked about the interview tonight, and like, you're, anything about his candidacy?
Yeah, I think you'd be better in the position he's in now, and then you bring in better people. Not better people, but also increase the smartness that you have in the central office by bringing in Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer, please.
Okay. I want to start off with that I understand that there are a lot of intense feelings around this, but there is no need for anyone to be degrading or disrespectful to anyone involved in this process. Some of the comments that were left, and I'm talking to people on Zoom if that's not obvious, some of the comments left were absolutely inappropriate, and I'm really unhappy with that. In my conversation with my reference for Mr. Witt, it was Mr. Canfield. He is an elementary principal in Troy Schools. He had, you know, a lot of great things to say about Mr. Witt, even though they have not worked together in some time. It is interesting, though, because a lot of my interview reflects Jim's interview with his reference check, in that, in management style, Mr. Canfield says that Mr. Witt is unique. He says how it is, he has good intentions, but he can rub people the wrong way. He also said that he struggles with union presidents. But he also had some great things to say about him. In particular, the program that he launched in Troy to hire and retain diverse candidates and to form their new teacher evaluation, the team thing that Mr. Witt spoke about in his interview, that is actually still what they use in Troy District. I think Mr. Witt is a good guy. I think he is a good lawyer. I think he is very valuable to this district as a human resource guy. And I, I heard a lot in his plans in his interview and in his plan of human resource development. And I also agree with Jim that, that him and Dr. Robinson together would be the perfect way to go.
Thank you. Lisa, please.
So let's start off with, Mr. Witt is no teaching assistant. I think everybody here knows that, I think everybody on the phone knows it, but, but that seems to be, you know, a major, the elephant in the room. But he has worked 21 years in education in different facets. He has experience in contract management, bonds, bargaining, HR, finance. From my reference check, I was told that his management style is collaborative. He thought of great, his new initiatives, and he strengthened the bench, that he was successful and compassionate and a team player, but he liked to be appropriately challenged. And the former superintendent said he was very qualified to be a superintendent. And I thought he answered his questions very mannerably. Well, there was only one question I noted where he didn't provide a result where he was asked to. Oh, and I was gonna go back to the coach. And I had never thought of that before, I had never heard of it. And as soon as my reference for Dr. Robinson said that, I felt immediately like we had failed Mr. Witt. We knew he didn't have a background in superintendency, he was thrown in in a very difficult situation, and we gave him absolutely no support. And I feel that the board has to answer for that.
Thank you. Jeff, please.
I got, for Jason's reference, it was kind of similar from Westwood. He had nothing great things to say about him. Biggest thing that I took from him was his three strong qualities. He said that Jason's work ethic, integrity, conviction. He said what he believes and follows through with it. The other thing he said is he would hire him anytime, he'd be in any position, and he thought he'd make a great superintendent. That was what the reference was kind of similar. I thought Jason did a great job, 100-day presentation, first 12 minutes. I liked the book on everything about it, and answering the questions that I had. I know he doesn't have a teaching degree, but the other avenue sometimes a little more. I don't ever remember seeing too many of our superintendents in the classrooms teaching. They were there, they were there for support, but I don't remember going into the classrooms teaching. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Evelyn, please.
So again, I left a message on the reference check, I think that mine is pretty similar there. It's just in fact. I'll say the scene of Mr. Witt that I said and Dr. Robinson, you can tell that he has passion for what he does. As to the elephant in the room, not every teacher is going to be a good administrator. Not every superintendent who has led this district that has active experience has the ability to be a superintendent. As a matter of fact, some of them have been really bad superintendents. I don't think there are too many people who would disparage Randy Liva, who has not a teacher and has led Wayne Risa for how many years now? Right? And is respected in the community and the district, and is. And is, and is respected in the community and the district, and has not been injured. Uh, so like, while I understand the, um, concern over that, to me, it doesn't, it just doesn't wash. Um, because we had our past, how many superintendents? One, two, three, four, five, four former teachers, and I own a lot of them as a good superintendent. Um, so, um, I, I'd like, um, part of, you, part of the, please, I'm impressed with the succession planning and incoming coworkers that is put in place in other districts. I think the succession planning especially is something that we lack in this district, and our vision for that, um, is, is good. We've needed that for some time because, um, the reality is needersleept and need to be able to fill this position, right? His bond experience clearly, um, speaks for itself. I'd like his answers on, well, when he addresses broken, um, with what the situation at large could go across and if he were wrong. I'm willing to struggle with if he's wrong, so, um... Wonderful, wonderful answer. His, uh, classroom of the future shows a heart for students that, um, I haven't heard from anyone I want to have. For someone who isn't an educator, he understands what our students need, and he's not afraid to say what he doesn't understand. He, you know, he admitted that curriculum is not something he's strong at, and he, um, um, I don't know where I am. Um, he admitted that he needs to, to facilitate the, you know, the leadership of those who do understand his, like, curriculum. So, um, those are my questions. I will say, there have been times, and I've said this to him, so I have a, I have a conversation, where he has rubbed me the wrong way, right? So, um, but we've developed a number of relationships that, you know, I can say, really? Um, which is what ultimately I think you want with a board and your superintendent. Um, ideally, if we could take a little bit of this personal, this person that, you know, Frank's not a better superintendent, we would have a perfect candidate, but that's not the way the world works, unfortunately.
Thank you. Sherry.
So I too liked his summer day presentation. Um, he has not taught children. He has taught. He taught at the college level, so he is familiar with what it is to teach in a classroom. So I just want to clarify that. Um, I doubt he gave excellent answers, and my thing is, is that Mr., Dr. Robinson, um, his school has three hundred and thirty-seven students, and only two percent were at or above proficiency in math. He does not have the numbers as he claims in his, um, resume. He doesn't have them in reading either. So he doesn't say much about his development of teachers or his, his ability to make curriculum decisions that would impact student learning. And he talks about accountability. So I, I don't have faith in somebody whose numbers are lower than ours. Jason is by far the best candidate.
Okay. So that's, everybody's talked about each candidate at this point. Just going to poll the board and see where we're at. It's not a vote, right? We're just going to see where we're at and, and see what other discussion needs to happen. Um, so at this point, again, it's not a vote. We're not making a motion at this point, but just polling to get the temperature of the board. Okay? So, uh, Mr. Bailey, which way are you leaning, sir?
Uh, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you.
Hey, somebody got on you. Sorry, I didn't hear you. Sorry.
Dr. Robinson.
So what I had said is that we're just polling the board, taking the temperature of the board, and seeing where we're at, and if we're ready or more decis, or more discussion needs to happen here. Uh, Mr. Bailey, you said Dr. Robinson. Thank you. Jennifer.
Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff. Mr. Witt. Okay? Uh, Evelyn, please.
Mr. Witt.
Uh, Sherry, please.
Mr. Witt.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Dr. Robinson.
And Lisa, please. So if I heard you correctly, um, that was Sherry, Lisa, Jeff, and Evelyn were in favor of this. And Jim, Jennifer, and Rebecca were in favor of Dr. Robinson. So at this point, then, President, uh, it appears that you have the majority of the board, uh, in favor of one candidate. So I think at this point, if you feel prepared, you could entertain a motion and then have further discussion.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I approve the Board of Education recommend Jason Witt as the new superintendent of Redford Union Schools, District Number One, subject to a negotiated and board approved contract. Second.
And a motion by Ms. Prymore, second by Ms. Collier, that the Board of Education recommends Jason Witt as the new superintendent of the Redford Union Schools, District Number One, subject to a negotiated and board approved contract. Do you want any other discussion?
To the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that this is a board decision, but I have a very unique position on the board currently as the only person who has students currently enrolled in Redford Union Schools. Because I see what happens day to day and has had, has happened day to day over the past year, if Mr. Witt is superintendent, my children will be unenrolled from Redford Union Schools. I would just like to share that with everyone. That is how much I do not have faith in him as superintendent.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
The chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey?
So from the beginning, there's been false information throughout the, the candidate search. And, um, I'm looking at the resume. There's two things that were mentioned. Mr. Robinson, or Dr. Robinson doesn't have any teaching experience.
I don't think anybody ever said that.
Yeah, Ms. Chloe, Chloe did, I think. So administered teacher, Malcolm X Academy, on page three of the resume, nineteen ninety-three to two thousand nine.
Mrs. Kabachi, I mean, would Mr. Bailey like to point out who said that? Because all of us are disputing that claim.
Well, somebody did. I don't remember who it was.
Okay, but nobody here, nobody here is claiming it, so we need to move along.
Yes, we need to move along. So, Ms. Kabachi, you had mentioned about, uh, he said something about education leadership. You specifically said something about doctorate degree. The focus of his doctorate degree was education leadership, curriculum, public policy.
I understand what his...
Master's degree was educational leadership. So if he referenced something, where is education was educational? This, this backs it up. I don't understand.
He said he had a PhD in education. I was just pointing that out. I believe, I believe I stated this, he has a PhD in African-American studies with a focus on educational leadership.
So we're splitting hairs. There's a difference between not having it and the way it's presented, which creates a falsehood.
I, I don't believe I was false. I was saying exactly what he put there. Do you have anything else, Mr. Bailey?
No.
Great. Any further discussion? Right, this requires a roll call over, Mr. Bailey?
No.
Ms. Collier?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Osaski? Ms. Prymore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Vote carries for zero. Do I have a motion? Two.
Four, three.
Four, three, sorry. Do I have a motion that we identify three people to represent the Board of Education to work with an attorney as a board in negotiating a contract with the above named superintendent?
Good.
I, the chair, I approve that, um, Ms. Kabachi, Mr. Osaski, and Ms. Gray work with, um, uh, Mr. Butler, um, to negotiate, uh, this contract.
Uh, I, I'm not even stupid at this time. Would you like to amend your, your motion?
Uh, Jeff tells me. Okay. Jeff, well, tells me. Oh, I'm okay with that.
All right, I have a motion. Uh, I'm looking for a second. I have a motion by Ms. Prymore, second by Mr. Osaski, that Jeff Osaski, Evelyn Prymore, and Rebecca Gray represent the Board of Education and work with Mr. Butler as the attorney of the Board of Education in negotiating a contract with the above named superintendent. Would said contract to be brought for the Board of Education approval on, oh, let's say June...
Shouldn't it be for July first, though?
Well, but we would approve the contract for...
Oh. What's say is meeting? Is that what you need to know?
Yeah.
Okay, give me two seconds.
Pardon me?
Two seconds. It's the fourteenth, the fourteenth.
Okay, June fourteenth. Twenty twenty-one. Serious set. Okay, now, a little bit of a roll call, Mr. Bailey?
No.
Ms. Collier?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Osaski? Ms. Prymore?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Okay, here it's by two. Board of Education communications discussion.
Vote may four.
Vote may four. Future meeting date scheduled at this time, Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty-one, the Redford Facility Committee meeting at five thirty PM. Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting, six thirty PM here at the board offices. Monday, May seventeenth, special meeting on Zoom only, and we're hoping by the middle of the day, it is only to identify voters for Ms. Collier. Do I have a motion for a chair? Support. Move by Mr. Osaski, second by Ms. Prymore. Are you discussing?